Sorry.
Um, but we don't want all of this. We haven't officially started yet, so.
Oh.
Yeah, I'd I'd say.
No, I'll pause it. Evening, everyone. Welcome to our Wednesday evening Bible study. We had an awesome teaching last week and we're gonna continue so. And last week we had Dr. Apostle O'Neill Salmon, and we're gonna continue with him. So have your pens, your paper, your devices, your pads, your computers, your laptop, whatever you write with, ready? And we're gonna turn the floor over to Apostle.
God bless you all, everyone. Glad to be back, glad to be back, and even more to see you all here with us as we continue this journey together in God's Word. Um, uh, tonight, or this evening, rather, I am excited, as I'm usually when it comes to hearing and also being able to share in the Word of God, and so hopefully you are feeling um, the same. As I said last week, God has been doing some amazing things at the um, city, and I am grateful for it. I am so thankful, I'm all in. I know it comes with um, much um, in part, but to God be the glory, he is bringing us all through. Um, I want you to know that I'm praying for you. I know in part that this um, season, as we are seeing God expand himself in the room, um, uh, and he is calling forth for so much of us in turn. I know it comes with a lot of responsibilities, a lot of um, uh, coming to Jesus moments, if at best as well. Um, but even in the midst of elevation, I know that there is often the test that precedes it, and so I'm praying for you as well. And it's not just about those being elevated to any office at the end of the month, but it is to the body of Christ, and so um, just know that uh, this is the moment we ought to be praying one for another. Uh, might not, uh, need I remind you, as it pertains to next week, um, in fact, the next two weeks, um, we're gonna take up um, a pause here to Bible study um, uh, for the next two weeks. So tonight, consider um, this uh, as far as this month goes, that this will be the last to this month, and it will pick up come July. Don't worry, we'll send out messages and such so as to remind you. Now, what are we doing in the next two weeks? Well, let's talk about next week real quickly here. Um, we're gonna be entertaining again a fast, um, recall in the church to a fast, and anyone in part that feels led to join us, we want you to do so as well. But we'll be passed in from six AM to six PM starting this Monday. Um, and to each day of the fast, except for Sunday, to each day of the fast, Monday through Saturday, we're gonna be praying at six AM um, together. So anyone that can join us, make way to do so. Um, but again, we'll start the morning off with prayer, and guess what? We invite you to conclude with prayer with you, your family, loved ones, or even a prayer pa- partner. Find somebody to close out the prayer with come next week. Um, the fast, how do you govern yourself? It's a water-only fast. I'm sorry, not water, liquid-only fast. It's a liquid-only fast during the time of six AM to six PM, so as to make it clear again. Um, thereafter, you are welcome to partake in whatever meal you so choose to have. But during the time of the fast, that consecrated time, please govern yourselves accordingly, if you could. Um, we invite you, I wanna make a personal invite to you come next weekend, not this coming weekend. Um, but next weekend, I would love to have you in the house if you're able to, that's on the twenty-third, as we host what is called Ignite. I truly believe there's gonna be a great outpouring then, and if you've been at the city the last two weeks, you know what God has already been doing. I'll speak to that in a little bit here, um, as the Lord leads. Uh, but again, if you can join us, join us then. Um, to anyone, and all the fathers in part, in advance, I wanna say Happy Father's Day. Amen, praise God, and God bless you all. Hope you can um, find some time of rest, and of course, um, make the best of all celebrations. Listen, tonight, I wanna lead right into the subject. I wanna jump into Romans, Romans chapter five. I'm not sure how much of the verses, um, how many uh, verses to which we're gonna read tonight out of that, but Romans chapter five, let's pick up at verse twelve. Romans chapter five, verse twelve. Um, last week, we talked about repentance, and uh, some of which is going to even better help us to understand um, where we are today. And for those of you that have um, just started your own walk with the Lord, and you're seeking to bring, you know, to come to a greater understanding as to God's purpose and will for your life, and even beyond that, knowing how to walk upright with him, I'm gonna talk about the power of the Holy Spirit as it pertains to you walking with him and the necessity of it. You know, um, I have been saved uh, thirty-five years now, um, I uh, yeah, thirty-five years, um, in turn, uh, gave my life to the Lord, if I did the math right, and excuse me if I'm off by, you know, by um, the numbers, but I gave my life to the Lord Mother's Day nineteen eighty-nine. Um, it was when I came to know Christ for myself. I was born and raised in the church, but even then, um, uh, and up to that point, in fact, um, be it around ten, eleven years old, I still didn't quite grasp who God was, and more so um, what this Holy Spirit, Holy Ghost, we called it then, um, was all about. Um, even after receiving the Holy Ghost, and yes, giving my life to him, and him walking with me, and me walking with him, I didn't quite understand all the benefits therein to having the Holy Spirit dwell within, and so in part, I wanna speak to that for the new believers, and perhaps even for some that have simply gone a while, not ever knowing, never coming to really comprehend what this really means, and what what does it mean to have Christ in you and Christ working through you? What does the Spirit of God do for you, the believer? Um, I say that because, um, and I feel it in uh, reason to speak to it today. Why? Because in the last two weeks, our church has seen a refreshing and will continue, I believe, as the Spirit leads to see such, but has seen an outpouring. Um, I talked about it uh, last week, but um, to the first of the month, the Lord said that in this season, he's going to both um, fill, refill, and ignite um, the flame within, and so we are seeing that happen. Um, to the first weekend, over um, thirty people um, uh, received, um, amongst whom received the baptism of the Holy Spirit as well. I mean, you just, was just so evident in part. Um, and then this past weekend, just about the same number. I mean, we, we literally trying to recover from, from it all. Point in turn is to those individuals that um, it was their first experience of such, we wanna equip you well, and of course, to anyone else in part, um, to ensure that you will comprehend really what this means to you and your, your life. Romans chapter five, verse twelve. Um, and I have a lot of scriptures, so please take note. I'm gonna try to pace myself. We're recording this one intentionally. If the recording goes well, we'll put it up, load it up, and send it out, but uh, we'll see how that goes. All right, here we go. Scripture says, Paul says, wherefore as by one man sinned, entered into the world, and death by sin, and so death passed upon all men, for all have sinned. All right, we can pause right there real quickly to really ponder what this means to us. Because of the mere fact that Adam in the garden sinned, in part, he disobeyed God, now sin has entered into the world, and by a repercussion of doing so, due to disobedience and the entertaining of that sin, or that um, uh, opportunity to sin, rather, now uh, man has, between him and God oftentimes, especially, uh, I just wanna say that spirit, yeah, yeah. Between him and uh, God oftentimes is that of the sin. Now, there is so much scripture, so many scriptures within the Word of God that speaks to the detriment of such, and one that's poignant to me is the, the repercussions are the, one of the um, end it all to sin is, what the Bible says it this way, for the wages of sin is death. So in other words, it's not always a physical, in fact, nor often people presume that it will be physical, but I'd like to have you to know there's a spiritual separation now. Um, if you regard in the Garden of Eden, um, God, eh, eh, by spirit, God would often walk um, with man. And the Bible puts it this way, in the cool of the day. So in other words, man had an interaction and a relationship with God. This is prior to sin entering Eden, and as such, there was communion and a communion at best. Um, it was pristine, it was wonderful, everything was working the way it should, and then of course, due to um, the serpent, the word said beguiled in Eve, and Eve then presented um, to Adam an opportunity to follow along. He yielded himself to such and not obeying what God had told him, bro- um, allowed sin then to come into the world. Now, that's uh, that's important. Why? Because thereafter, you recognize, if you read in Genesis, um, Adam's approach, and Adam and Eve's approach, but more so Adam, I put it on again, was then to hide himself from God. And that's so often what happens when sin is entertained, we have a tendency to wanna cover up. We have a tendency to wanna withdraw rather than pull into the presence of God. Um, and, and so of, of course, for such, um, there was a punishment rendered, one of the punishments being they were excommunicated from the Garden of Eden. Um, and therein, there was a curse placed um, uh, upon such on the ground, and then upon the um, the woman, and of course, man had many hardships put on him likewise. Point in turn, there was now need for redemption. Um, the Bible talks about without the shedding of blood, there is no remission for sins. Um, so in other words, because blood, a blood sacrifice was needed, and it was not by the natural, um, uh, in the, in the sense of animal sacrifices, God made himself a lamb for the slaughter, and that re- representation there is Jesus Christ in the flesh. He came, um, as John three sixteen says, because he loved the world. Um, and so he, God gave his only begotten son, who is of him, he gave him to us, um, to be that lamb for the slaughter. Now, I'm saying it in this light so that you understand how I'm leading, and how the Word is leading us to this point of knowing why the Spirit of God was necessary. So now that God, um, uh, in the flesh, that is Jesus, now gets crucified on the cross, and as such, um, not only do we have uptime access to him, but we also have, by the shedding of his blood, um, the opportunity to be redeemed in him. Now, it takes on several um, ends to that. Now, one being repentance, one being the necessity to be washed, the next being to be filled. Now, I'm not necessarily putting it in a particular order, though the order might be important, or is rather often some importance. Now, again, um, uh, we've got to realize our own condition. The Bible says for all of sin and come short of his glory, so in part, guess what? By you being born into the world, you are already, amen, um, a person to whom needs Christ. Um, and as such, because we have the stain of sin upon us. Now, he that is in Christ, the word says, has become now a new creature. I'm gonna give you some scriptures in a moment, don't worry. He that is in Christ has become a new script, um, new creature. All things then being passed away behold, all things become new. So in Christ, we become renewed, um, or we become new, in other words. But we have to make a decision along the way to stay in a relationship, to remain in relationship with God. But it goes even more from there. It's also taking on his word um, and taking on his practices, and that's important. Take on not only his word, but his practices. So in other words, we've not got, we need not only be hearers, but as the Word would admonish us, to be also doers as well. Here's some things you need to know about the nature of man before we get into this Holy Spirit move, and the reason for it, and the benefits thereby. Romans chapter seven, verse eighteen says something here. It says, for I know that nothing good, this is the ESV version, English Standard Version, it says, I know that nothing good dwells in me, that is, in my flesh. For I have the desire to do what is right, but not the ability to carry it out. Oh, God, that's a loaded scripture there in itself. I want you to know this, because many a times we're fighting um, with doing the right, as Paul would oftentimes say, but in this wise, he said, the things that I do or would um, would to do, I do not. Um, in other words, what I know to do right, I find myself struggling in, but the things that I know that are wrong, I find myself then doing. Isn't it amazing? Because that's many a times where we do find ourselves, and by the way, there's a no judgment zone here, because the truth be told, this is a daily walk with God that we must maintain. Um, because we will all be given opportunities to circumvent, to deviate, to get off course. Um, the enemy comes to tempt, to steal, kill, and destroy. We know in part his mission in that, so we have to remain focused and consecrated. Romans seven, again, eighteen, that's what I read. It says, for I know that nothing good dwells in me, that is, in my flesh. For I have this desire, I have the desire to do what is right, but I don't have the ability to carry it out. Why? Because the Bible even tells us that which is born of the flesh is flesh. So as long as we are working through the flesh, we will reap off it, that which is off the flesh. This is how Galatians five, by the way, Galatians five nineteen through twenty-one says it. It says, the works of the flesh are evident. There are sexual moralities, immorality is rather, um, impurities, sensuality, idolatry, sorcery, enmity, strife, jealousy, fits of anger, rivalries, dissensions, divisions, envy, drunkenness, orgies, and things like these. And then he goes on to say, I warn you, as I warned you before, that those who do such things will not inherit the kingdom of God. So by reason, if why, if while we are in this flesh, we are struggling with such things, then what is our redemption? Where does it come? How do we embolden ourselves or empower ourselves to ensure that we don't succumb to such um, things? What do we fight with? Um, how do we fight? I know it's one to pray, and that's important. Yes, we take nothing from that. Um, but even by the measure that we're still in the flesh, how do we then move? This is what the Spirit of the Lord says in Galatians five sixteen, a few verses before. It says, walk by the Spirit that you will not gratify the desires of the flesh. Walk by the Spirit? What does that mean? Is it the Spirit of his word, or is it by his spirit? And I could, uh, how have you pondered while they're different? There are times one in the same, and you'll hear it in a moment, why? Um, but again, walk by the Spirit, um, so again, you don't fulfill the impulses or the desires of the flesh. Hmm, profound. Let's look at one more scripture. Romans chapter three, verse ten, Romans three, ten. As it is written, none is righteous, known at one. No one understands, no one seeks for God. All have turned aside, together they have become worthless. No one does good, not even one. It goes on and to about verse eighteen, and it really kinda speaks to what is in the nature of man. So we need a Savior, don't we? We need um, to be redeemed, because the truth of the matter is this, that there will be a day um, to which the books will be reconciling, we'll all be brought before the judgment seat and judged according to what we have done here in the world and in our flesh. Scripture talks about the heart, the heart being deceitful above all things. That's Jeremiah seventeen nine. It says it's depress- desperately sick, and who can understand it? So we need to understand that we are in no wise perfect in any way. Um, already, we've read, uh, there's none righteous, again, that's Romans ten, uh, three, ten. So in part, we need not judge each other according to, you know, whether we esteem one to be more righteous than the other, because the truth of the matter is, we all need God, and more often, even while safe, we're still working through our deliverance. All right, this is how Paul puts it in Romans chapter seven, twenty-four. Wretched man that I am, who will deliver me from this body of death? Now, I can keep on reading a whole bunch of scriptures, just to have you come to realize the fallen state of man. Now, here's the profound opportunity we've been given, are the, the powerful um, opportunity given to us. First of all, we gotta realize that the Spirit of God, by measure of the, um, the, uh, the Bible talks, and Acts two thirty-eight, and if you really wanna know where this all began, I think you need, first of all, you can see God moving through the Word of God, because every scripture lends to inspiration and doctrine and being able to preach, but yes, while we get into Acts, and then here comes the church now, um, and their church is being reformed, because now in part, Christ has now left the scene, and he has sent himself, I'm sorry, his spirit, that is, um, and he identifies his spirit as the Comforter. There are gonna be some terms we're gonna use tonight, that some might be more familiar with than others. You're gonna hear me um, say, Holy Spirit, you're gonna hear me say Comforter, and you're gonna hear me use the term Holy Ghost. They're all in the same, um, they can be considered transposable. Here's what you need to know, um, as it pertains, let's, let's reside maybe more so on the Holy Spirit and the Holy Ghost for a moment. Um, in Christianity, for those that are new to this walk, it is um, often considered, first of all, it is the third person um, of the Holy Trinity. Now, the word Trinity is not used in the text, in scriptures. However, the Shema, which is relating to um, who God is, scripture says, hero Israel the Lord, this is a Shema, hero Israel the Lord, our God is one. So we take on the understanding that they are three in one. So it is simply one. Now, we'll talk about the Godhead, and I think we need to, because there's been so many misnomers and so many things misinterpreted there. Um, but for now, let's consider that the triunion of God, meaning the, the oneness of God in him, he bears witness to the Holy Spirit. Now, let's, let's move on real quickly. Um, it's more often in according to the new church, um, there are the new um, movement of the church today, that we hear the term Holy Spirit. When I was growing up, more often, you would hear it as such, the Holy Ghost. Um, all right, so again, Holy Spirit and the Holy Ghost are often interchangeable, um, and they refer again to the third person of the Holy Trinity. Um, and this is fin- finding its way into our Christian theology. The Holy Spirit again is more modern and commonly used term, while the Holy Ghost is an older and somewhat archaic expression. It does not mean that it doesn't bear any rev- um, relevance today. I grew up here in the Holy Ghost, and so I am more inclined to talk about it. Some, for me, I kinda, you know, some things will never get dismissed. My God, it's just something about it, but nonetheless, um, they're one in the same. Now, we'll talk about tonight. What does it really do? Now, I'm gonna give you some leading thoughts, um, as we explore the scriptures, and I've got a lot in front of me right now that I wanna touch on. Um, I want you to qu- uh, quickly write, um, if at best, uh, these few words are what I would call, um, various roles and functions of the Holy Spirit. So let's call them various roles and functions. Comforter, we started there. The Holy Spirit is a Comforter. By reason of him being a Comforter, he often steps in place in two ways, as a helper and as an advocate. Um, uh, he comes alongside us to help us in our circumstances, whatever the situations, and there are times where he becomes an advocate, where in part, he steps in and advocates on our behalf. Oh, God, now, I'm saying something loaded right there. I'll break it down in a moment. So the Holy Spirit is seen as a source of comfort and assistance to the believer. In times of trouble or in need, the Holy Spirit belie- uh, watches, uh, is believed to come alongside us again, as believers, to provide guidance, strength, and support. Don't worry, we'll get into some scriptures. Not only is he a Comforter, Advocate, and Helper, but catch this, he's also a teacher and a guide, a teacher and a guide. The Holy Spirit is believed to teach and to guide believers, that is, who we are, um, in understanding and living out the teachings of Christ. Many a times where we find it most difficult to really walk out the Word is because we're reliant, we're becoming self-reliant rather than spirit-reliant. In other words, we need him to lead us into understanding. It is him that brings us into understanding. Now, watch this, watch this. The Holy Spirit does not work in what, um, um, uh, without the Word of God also being embedded in you, and I need to say it in that way, because it's through the Word of God that that you are emboldened to do even more. Why? Because the entrance of this word brings forth light. So what is once in darkness now gets um, brought into his marvelous light. So by reason of you feed, and, and that's how, you know, I like to think of it as though the Word of God feeds the Spirit of God. They're one in the same, all right? Um, this includes helping believers again interpret and even apply scriptures to their lives. So as we pray, there are times where scriptures, and not just pray, but read the Word of God, there are times where by a scripture will leap off the page, and you will know clearly that it is pertaining to something you're going through. Why? Because it, the Spirit of God in you bears witness with the Word, and then the Word brings conviction or confirmation. I'll say it again. The Spirit of God in you bears witness to the Word, and then the Word brings forth either two things more often, conviction or uh, well, actually, three, conviction, um, what did I say? Confirmation or correction. Oh, my God. So hence why we need the Word in us and before us. By the way, that leads to number three, um, of the various roles of the Holy Spirit, and that is simply to bring conviction. Conviction to what? To sin. It is the Holy Spirit that is often convicting us as individuals, um, of our sinful nature, and leading then us to repentance and the turning away from and to God. We talked about repentance last week. So, watch this. When the Spirit of God in you is alive and being refreshed and moving, watch this, there are things that by the Spirit of God being in you, when it becomes, because first of all, it's not your spirit that we're talking about. We're talking about the Spirit of God being in you. There are things that by his nature, he's grieved by. So by reason, when it is that we entertain such or are exposed to such, the Spirit of God in us can then become grieved, bringing about some conviction to such. I'm often challenged with the individuals that just get away with things only, praise God, and move along life journey, as though they have done no wrong, and they have no need to repent, or they have no, um, they have no wrong, um, in their doing. The truth of the matter is this, that while I'm not here to judge, I am realizing in the more that we have been given every opportunity, um, uh, to, to come short. In fact, the Bible says, we've come short of his glory. Point in turn is this, we have here an opportunity to come to him by witnessing, um, by, by his Spirit's bearing weakness with our own. We have an opportunity now to come before him and come boldly at best to repent of those sins. So he doesn't wanna leave us in our, in our mess. Let me move on real quickly, because I gotta get to some scriptures. It also, um, one of the roles of such is to empower, or it becomes an empower. The Holy Spirit is considered to em- um, as such, to empower believers towards Christian living. Equipping them with the spiritual gifts for service, enabling them to live according to God's will. So in other words, by the Spirit of God being within us and working through us, watch this, not only are we equipped to live as he wants us to live, but we're able to walk out in the, um, or we're also being able to be equipped, rather, with the spiritual gifts, so that we can do the will of the one that sent us, and uh, and, and perform what um, acts he wants us to do, and he enables us to get it done as well. Now, uh, I said a whole lot there. Let me support much of what I've said already with some text. And, because now we gotta put it into context. Um, we can talk about uh, a number of things by which are functions of the Spirit of God in our lives, but I really want us to, to, to hold to some texts, because this is important. Mention I live by bread alone, but by every word. So I know because we're in Bible study tonight, how important it is that we really gather our thoughts and really truly have an anchor when it comes to, um, the Word of God. All right, I talked, um, earlier about the Holy Spirit being a helper. So let's go to John sixteen, verse seven. John sixteen, seven, he is your help. My God is my help. Nevertheless, I tell you the truth, it is to your advantage that I go away. For I do not go away, for if I do not go away, the helper will not come to you. But if I go, I will send him to you. So here, praise God, the Spirit of God becomes a helper to the believer. How many things have we tried to do, and we've only come up short in trying to do so? Because we did not allow the Spirit of God to equip us and embolden us with the fortitude to get those things done. You know, the truth of the matter is, there are certain things that I've allowed in my life, over my, the course of my life, and I fought, praise God, to let go of, only to realize I was fighting, um, uh, without God being, um, with me, and for, um, and me being yielded, if at best, to him, to then use me for his glory. Um, you think in respect to not only the things that you deal with in the natural, but think of those, those things to which by reason of the fact that we fight in the spiritual realm, that we're trying to fight without him. The Spirit of God becomes a help in the time of trouble. It becomes that help that emboldens us again, so that we can fight this good fight of faith. You see, as my flesh fights for control, it is really the Spirit that steps in and helps me to be who God created me to be. One of the reasons why many a times the church is called, in fact, to a fast, is so that, watch this, we starve then the flesh, so the Spirit will be strengthened therein. we starve then the flesh, so the spirit will be strengthened therein. The truth of the matter is Paul put it this way, that he had to mortify this flesh, which is to crucify, to kill it daily. The truth be told believers, if you give the flesh, I heard one preacher put it this way, if you give him an inch, he'll take a foot, you give him a foot, he'll take a yard. It's the truth. The Satan is not just um looking for handouts, he wants it all. And so I want you to know that um, as you feed the spirit, praise God, you will strengthen that of the spirit. Um, when you're feeling powerless or even tired, or like your life is in fact falling apart, you can have a confidence even as a believer that you are not alone. Why? Because the spirit of God is a helper. He makes himself known to you. You can even start each day knowing that Holy Spirit is there for you to help you. Um, it is in, in Him being a he- a help to you, He becomes that power that sustains. He becomes that energy that you need, He keeps you in fact on that holy path. And you do not have to hesitate about inviting him in. Um, in turn, because again, he is what? He is my helper. He is my helper. Not only that, by the way, the Holy Spirit is that which sanctifies. It sanctifies. Now, here's First Corinthians for you, First Corinthians six eleven. This is important, it's, He sanctifies. But you were washed, I'm sorry, but you were washed, you were sanctified. You were justified in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ and by the spirit of our God. Now, I've been taught in school, and this is clear, um, this is important because there are certain scriptures to which we're gonna read that in part, while reading at a first glance, you might want to separate the two. But I've been told that and is a conjunction word, meaning they go hand in hand, you can't have one without the other. So whatever is said before cannot be looked as, as individually as, as though it stands alone, aloof from what is then said thereafter. So I want you to read this again. It says, but you were washed and you were sanctified and you were justified in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ and by the spirit of our God. So they go what? Hand in hand. To be sanctified believers simply means to be set apart as to be sacred. Alright, this is important. This is important, why? Because the spirit of God has made you separate and has already separated you from not only the repercussions of the, of sin and in part, you know, um, it, but He has set you aside sacred unto Him. Essentially, it's the purification of sin and the spiritual maturing to become Christ-like. So, He does in Christ has become a new creature, all things again being passed away. As you grow in God, believers, you'll recognize that there are certain attributes about yourself that you even at times admired. You'll find yourself changing along the way. You know, one of the fears and the way in which it was presented to me, I remember going up and, and, and particularly by people in the world was ah, no, no, you don't wanna go into church, you don't wanna, you know, you don't wanna do that cuz man, you start changing the way you dress and you start changing the way you walk and the way you talk, and then people put it in that light, and you started thinking in part, wow, is there gonna be any part of me that's, you know, that remains? Um, the truth of the matter is, it may have been so for a great many, but that's not always the problem with us all. Uh, for some of us, it is the way which we talk, the way in which we interact, the way in which we function on a day to day. Um, there are certain disciplines that we have to entertain, because to be a disciple really means to be one disciplined in Him. Um, you know, in part, so I'm, I'm, I'm really saying a whole lot there. Um, I'm hoping you, you really can pull apart what pertains to you. But I am saying is this, that as you grow in Christ, you'll find that you will become less like you were and more like He is. You'll become less like you were and more like He is. I know there's somebody on this um line right now that knows what I'm talking about because you are so far from what you were. The truth of the matter is, if you met me thirty-five years ago, now, I was a kid back then, but nonetheless, some attributes then lingered long longer perhaps than they should, because I was not always yielded to the word of God. And let me also be clear, I did not follow through with studying to show myself, approve the workman needed, not be ashamed, being able to rightly divide the word of truth. I did not make the word of God. I did not put that word of God, as the Bible says, hide that word in my heart, so I would not sin against Him. I did not allow the word of God to penetrate me so and bring conviction to my life. So there were things that I entertained by reason of my own ignorance and my own doing. But as the Holy Spirit washes me and cleanses me and purifies in me, my God, there's a burning, there's a yielding, there's a yearning now to become more like Him. Oh, God, I can't stand what O'Neil was and who O'Neil is if not thank you, Jesus, because I can testify truly, if it had not been for the Lord who was on my side, you, oh, God, you all know where you've been, you know what you were, you know what you were like. Praise God, intolerable for so many people, uh, insensitive, whatever it might have been, come on now, you can testify and tell your own truth. In part, this is important to the process of the believer, why? Because the spirit of God, watch this, does not want to leave you in the old, but in fact, we're becoming a new creature. That's what the scripture says. And by the way, believers, write this down, it is a daily process. And it takes time. It is a daily process and it takes time. Pardon yourself and certainly pardon others along the way. In other words, give them time. Who needs more time? The Holy Spirit wants to help you in this process of sanctification, I want you to know that. To die to your old self and to be all God created you to be, to be free from the entanglement of sin, be not entangled again in the yoke of bondage, to not be, um, to have you go back to, but to rather live a very victorious life. There are some things I thank God. It may have taken some time, I might have some bruises, I may have some scars, I might have fought Him a time or two along the way and refused and refuted that He was even talking to me. But I'm so grateful I'm not what I was, my God. The truth of the matter is, um, Christ knew best what I needed and what I needed and even more where I needed to be. Here's number three, y'all, here's number three. He makes you more like Christ. The spirit of God in you, you can desire all you want to be Christ-like, but i- is the spirit of God in you, working in and through you, that makes you more like Him. See, many a people can attest to, I'm a believer, and many people can attest to, and even I, I, when I say attest to, meaning they can proclaim that they are, but the truth of the matter is every tree bear fruit after its own kind, the spirit of God then being in you, being the tree planted in you, or the seed planted in you, watch this, then brings forth the fruit, so that which is born of the spirit is spirit, okay? And then if you are professing to be, then you should watch this, be a representation of Him. Some aspect of you should reflect who He is. He makes you more Christ-like. Second Corinthians three eighteen, second Corinthians three eighteen. And we all, who with unveiled faces contemplate the Lord's glory, are being transformed into His image with ever increasing glory, which comes from the Lord who is the Spirit. Oh, my God, somebody shout, I'm being transformed. I'm being transformed. You see Moses, if we take Moses for a moment, Moses experienced God's glory on the mountaintop. But we have communion now, watch this, he experienced it there, but we now have communion with Him every day. That's profound. You see, our goal is Christ-likeness. And this takes place through the power of the Holy Spirit. While we focused on sanctification and diminishing or diminishment of sin in the um, to the previous point, watch this, we cannot be transformed without Him. So hence, now we need to have that spirit in us. Here's number four. He helps us, this is the spirit of God in us, working through us. He helps us to do the will of the Father. Have you ever been in a place where you fought um to do the right or to do right? It is the spirit of God that oftentimes convicts us and then equips us to get on track. The Bible says in Acts chapter eight twenty-nine, then the spirit said to Philip, go up and join this chariot. What am I really saying? It, 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 it showed him the, not only the path to go, but watch this, he also provided the help um that was needed along the way. I'm gonna put a pin on that cuz I'm gonna come back to that in a moment. The Holy Spirit, number five, the Holy Spirit gifts you for ministry. It gifts you for ministry. Now, I must be clear, there are different kinds of spiritual gifts. We're not talking all um, more so to the five-fold ministry gifts, though those seem to be where many a times our thoughts go. But the Bible says explicitly in First Corinthians twelve. I'm gonna give you some, yeah. Cuz we're in that season right now where there's the birthing and the expansion, the kingdom. First Corinthians twelve. And the revelation of what gifts light within us. Alright, First Corinthians twelve verse four. Through eleven, I wanna read the KJV. It says, now there are diversities of gifts, but the same Spirit. And there are differences of administrations, but the same Lord. And there are diversities of operations, but it is the same God which worketh all in all. But the manifestation of the Spirit is given to every man to profit withal. For to one is given by the spirit, the word of wisdom, to another, the word of knowledge, by the same Spirit. To another faith, by the same Spirit, to another, the gifts of healing by the same Spirit. To another, the working of miracles, to another prophecy, to another discernment of spirits, to ano- another diverse, uh, diverse kind of tongues and to another interpretation of such tongues. But all these worketh that one and the self-same Spirit divided to every man severally as he wills. My God, there's so much being said right there. So by reason now of the Holy Spirit in you, there is a gift then presented on you or to you, an opportunity um, to then work in the kingdom more effectually. Now, this is important. I'm one of those, and I don't mean to go there, but some of you all can go with me on this journey. I'm one of those that um, watch a lot of sci-fi, you know, in part I'm given to that. And uh, you know, there are some times in certain films and uh, even cartoons at best that after one, you know, um, has an encounter, be it with uh, you know, some, some inanimate object or so, all of a sudden a power comes upon them, you know, in part, and everybody's trying to figure it out. If you have ever watched, um, what's that show? Divergent, it's the, 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 Hunger, no, it's not Hunger Games, I'm thinking about, I think it's called Ever. Uh, but you know, they're, they're, they're all of a sudden, they're trying to discover what's gifts is inside of them. In part, by reason of the Holy Spirit, I don't wanna lose you in this. Um, now, there is a um, equipment that has taken place. There's a, um, uh, and by the way, uh, these gifts are not given um to uh, your sole benefit, but it is for the benefit of the kingdom. Um, the Holy Spirit imparts to believers gifts that are needed, in other words, in the church. Nobody receives all the gifts, but are, in fact, the Bible says it's, it's distributed amongst the body of Christ. Each person receiving different gifts. Um, I know all too often, and we do this, um, and we'll have a moment where in which some many are gonna entertain discovering for themselves where they're in fact gifted. I know one of the things that I'm often gifted are the areas that I'm gifted in as um, I came to answer even a, a sermon, a call in my life. Um, not the call to pastoring, but even before then, um, I recognized it at a particular time where God was calling me into a certain atmosphere, that given to me was the gift of wisdom. Now, I know this, why? Because I know things I know I shouldn't know. I know things that I, 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 that were well before my even, I mean, I'm forty-six and I feel like I'm further along, along the way, and I don't attribute it to anything I've read, I don't attribute to anything I've been taught or informed on. I just know it's only God. But I also know it has to be God because there are times where I have to double back and say, okay, how do I know this? And let me research to see if it is in fact so. Point in turn, it's a gift. You gotta know where you are, and of course, as you grow in Christ, you become better acquainted with such. I'm curious, what's your gift? What are some things you know you're gifted in? I'm not talking about your talent, I'm not talking about, although that might be in fact the area for gifting for you, I don't wanna um, uh, demonize it or minimize it in any way, but there are some things that we're gifted at best to do. Some people are prophetically inclined, some people are just, you know, eloquent speak, uh, eloquent speakers, they're gifted in administration. I know that's also an area to which, um, I know when it comes to the prophetic, I'm more oftentimes flowing, I, I can it's, it's in the era of art for me. Alright, let me move on real quick, I don't wanna lose anyone. Here's where we go next, the spirit of God, it imparts love. He imparts love. Not only that, but we rejoice, the scripture says, in our sufferings. Um, knowing that the suffering produces endurance and endurance produces character, and character produces hope and hope does not put us to shame, but God's love has been poured out into our hearts through the Holy Spirit who has been given to us. That's Romans five, three and five. He imparts love. We find love in our sufferings somehow. We recognize that God does not put more on us than we can bear. My God. And we hear in this word oftentimes echoing in our spirit because we've heard it, that the sufferings of this present time are not worthy to be compared to the glory that shall be revealed in us. My God, so it consoles us in such a way that we recognize that it's only but one for a moment, we also recognize that there's a purpose behind our sufferings. So we're not left in dismay or despondent in any way, but we're filled with hope because we know in the end, watch this. All things work together for good to them that are called according to His purpose. That love Him and are called according to His purpose. So in other words, guess what? It is not for naught, it is for His benefit. And there's somehow in some way, God shows up for us. You see, as we endure trials, God's love is poured out into us. In fact, the scripture says, as we suffer with Him, we shall also reign with Him. So in part, He's showing us, listen, um, to be like Him, in fact, guess what? We be, we, to be like Him truly, we've gotta then walk the path and walk through what He has also walked through Himself. Again, recognize that your hardship at best is but for a season. Alright, let me move on. The Holy Spirit gives hope, and I really wanna come through this because guess what? You've been now, many of you are here on the line, and you know the spirit of God is in you, and you know He's been talking to you, and and by the way, many a times we're so ignorant because we're not privy to the word of God, we don't, we give credit to ourselves, or we give credit to circumstances and situations and people, if at best, not recognizing it's the spirit of God that has made it possible for us. The Holy Spirit gives us hope. This is what Romans chapter fifteen, thirteen says. May the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace in believing. My God, so that by the power of the Holy Spirit, you may abound in hope. You know, there are so many reasons and so many things that would impress upon us reasons to give up, to fail, to fall, to come short, or to just simply abandon our hope. But it's the Holy Spirit that comes about, uh, and oftentimes says, you know what? Hold on. Stay in there, hang in there, I'm with you. You see, hope, in other word, as God hopes. This is the only possible, watch this, this is only possible in abundance through the power of the Holy Spirit working in you. And it is hope that carries people, carries us through trials and tribulations. It is the hope of God. You see, my strength, the Bible says, watch this, His strength is made perfect in my weakness. My God, so when I come to the end, when I come to losing all hope, praise God, guess what? Or not losing all hope, but given to doubt, let me put it in that way. When I come then to, or become succumb to my fears and my pressures and you name it in part, we gotta hold on with hope, cuz the Bible says, hope, hope make it not a shame. So hope then becomes fuel for the soul, it becomes fuel for the soul. I was watching a program and I, and I've heard it many times over, in fact. And um, there were some individuals particularly um, that were then liberated from the prison penal system. And they said, one of the most dangerous things to have in prison is hope. When you're incarcerated is that of hope, because you can hold to it and it will fuel you to believe and continue to believe. Um, but it is where the fight oftentimes begin. Why? Because the enemy knows the moment you lose it. My God, he's got you already bleeding and let, um, leaning to depression, anxiety, you name it. In part, cuz the enemy loves to work through fear, while God works through faith. Alright, here's number next, um, and I'm watching the time carefully. The Holy Spirit teaches and gives insight. It teaches, I told you all, I'm a double back, I'm a pull the pin, I put a pin on something, I'm a pull it back now. I talked about the Holy Spirit being a helper. This is John fourteen twenty-six. John fourteen twenty-six, if you can hang in there, I've got only about two more after this. Um, and uh, or no, yeah, two more after, this end it will wrap it up. Alright, but the Holy Spirit. All right, but the Holy Spirit, um, I'm sorry, but the helper, the Holy Spirit, whom the Father sends in my name, he will teach you all things and bring to your remembrance all that I've said to you. My God, I'll read it again, that's worth reading again. But the helper, the Holy Spirit, whom the Father will send in my name, he will teach you all things and bring to your remembrance all that I've said to you. You know, there are some things that I've learned along life's journey, that I didn't even realize stuck with me until I was in need of it most. There's some scriptures that you might read today, believers, and by the way, it may not make much sense to you now, because um, somehow it doesn't, you can't quite relate to it yet. But there are times in your life where a scripture will rise up in your soul, the well of your soul, and all of a sudden it begins preaching to you all over again. There's some times and seasons in our lives where we're encumbered with so many things, and all of a sudden God makes sense of it all, because the Spirit of God begins to reveal to you, oh, this is why you know what you know. This is why you had to go down that path. This is why you had to meet that person. This is why you had to endure that task. I'm trying to show you that all things are working together for your good. Praise God, I'm trying to show you that I know the way, um, that you must take. I'm sh- I'm trying to show you, that's why I had you on the straight and narrow. That's why I couldn't let you get away with just anything. That's why I had to teach you this way and bring you up the, the hard side of the road. That's why I had to bring you through the school of hard knocks. That's why I had to have you pressured. That's why I had to have them abandon you. That's why I had to have them drop you. Oh, God, don't think for a moment God won't use such. I'm preparing a message right now, I don't know when I'm a preacher, about the blessing of rejection. That's why I had to have them let you go. That's why I had to have them hurt your feelings. That's why I had to have them speak lies when, when they know the truth. Praise God, I want you to know, God has a setup and has a plan. You see, the Holy Spirit will give you insight again into what you are reading. And even furthermore, will help you recall what you, you've read in scripture. He brings to your mind, understanding to the truth. My God, one of the most powerful things I've come to know about the truth, the Bible says it, in this wise, the truth will make you free. In other words, what lies you once believed, once you know truth, you'll never be able to unknow it. Once you know truth, you will never be able to unknow it. My God, you know that, praise God, somebody can tell you all the while that the stove is hot. But the moment you touch it for yourself, praise God, that will be a memory in part. And if somebody comes about telling you what hot feels like, you know what hot feels like, cuz you've had an experience in part. Here's the thing about it, I can talk about the Holy Spirit all day and give you many scriptures, and I might just send some your way after all of this. But praise God, can I suggest to you, watch this, that I can talk about it, but it's not until you experience it. That's why the Bible says, oh, taste and see that the Lord is good. My brother, my sister, if you don't know, my God, God for yourself, I pray you come to know him for yourself. And now is the time while the, uh, porn is taking place, while we can sense God is up to something that he's preparing us. Oh, God, by the way, he is preparing us for his return. I gotta give you the last two before we close. Have you ever one, um, had one of those moments when you were in a situation and scripture verse you read or memorized even years ago, popped into your head and encouraged you in the moment? Guess what? That was the Holy Spirit reminding you of what you had been taught. Oh, don't think you're that skilled, that gifted, oh my God, I just gotta, you know, I got that kinda memory. For some of us, we might be in that way, but guess what? From, for the most part, it's the Spirit of God, especially when it speaks to your situation that you're going through. It ain't your memory now, it is the Spirit of God. He empowers you with understanding and the ability to recall scriptures that apply even to your life. Here's number nine, and I've got two, one more after this, and we'll wrap it up. The Spirit of God guides your prayers. Romans eight twenty-six, this is important, because we're going into a time of fasting and prayer, we're going, that's next week, y'all. By the way, don't wait till then to start praying. God forbid. All right, so Romans eight twenty-six. Likewise, the Spirit helps us in our weaknesses. For what? We do not know what we ought to pray for. But the Spirit himself intercedes for us with grownings too deep for words. My God, I don't know about you, I see ignite, I see people literally calling out to God, getting into that place. My God, where in part the Spirit of God starts moving so that we don't even know what to say. We're just lingering. I don't know about you, but I've been lingering, uh, of late in the presence of God, not just in the church house, but in my own office. I can't move when God tells me, sit still, be still, know that I'm God. There's something about the Spirit of God in this moment, where he's guiding our prayers, and all of a sudden we're touching on elements and we're touching on realms and we're going deeper and deeper in him. Sometimes we come about having no words. Have you ever been there? Or you have not much to say? Watch this, you don't even know where to start. That's what the Spirit of God, he makes intercession for us. Sometimes we don't even know how to articulate how we're feeling, um, what we're thinking, what we're dealing with, and all of a sudden in prayer, as we worship. In fact, I love to suggest to you, if you have never, oh, praise God for yourself, had this experience with God, and you're saying, God, how can I have more of you? Put on, Lord, I want your spirit in my life. I want to be anointed afresh. I want, I want the Holy Ghost. I want the infilling of the, um, the Spirit of God in me. Guess what? Just get lost in worship. In fact, that's what we're encouraging people when they come to the altar, just get lost in worship. Hallelujah is the highest praise. For back, uh, back in the days, we would oftentimes say it this way, say Jesus, Jesus, and get lost in him. It wasn't about saying Jesus, even though, no, 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 let me take that back, thank you, Holy Spirit for correcting that. He said, at the very mention of his name, every knee shall bow. So there was a submission, the reverence to his name. But then some just meant it religiously, and I know in part it might seem old school, but let me just tell you. It's more about putting in the focus on him, and there are times where so many thoughts come about into our minds. But as we get lost in worship, my God, and how do we get into the place of worship? Even scripture tells us this with the mind that we worship him. So in other words, you gotta make up your mind that I'm gonna worship him. Uh, nobody can do that for you. We can worship around you, but you gotta have your own worship. And so in part, as you say hallelujah, as you say praise the Lord, as you give God thanks, as you glorify him, all of a sudden he fills your mouth. My God, he fills your soul, he fills your spirit, engulfs your atmosphere, and then you get lost so much so. And the one thing we encourage when you are at that altar is to just open up your mouth and let freely whatever God says and drops in your spirit, in your mouth. Praise God, just let it flow. Don't try to make sense of it. Don't try to control it, don't try to change it, just let it flow. You will find yourself flowing in tongues more quickly. Oh, God, more freely, more liberally. All of a sudden now, the Spirit of God affirms and confirms. I cannot tell you enough how many times God has literally, um, uh, um, revealed to me in part, what he's about doing in those moments, even though I didn't even know what I was saying to him. Because the Spirit stepped in and made intercession and made clear to him what I was dealing with. My God, the Holy Spirit. Here's the last one, y'all, I'ma wrap it up right at eight, eight P M. Um, I hope you can hang on for this one. This is the last nugget. The Holy Spirit uses you to evangelize. What? Preacher, you, you, you could have dropped that in the first, no, no, this is where it lands. The Spirit of God uses you for evangelism. You will know, the Bible says, but you will receive power when the Holy Spirit has come upon you, and you will be witnesses. Now I want you to catch two things, power, witnesses in Jerusalem and in Judea and Samaria and onto the end of the earth. So he's given you by reason of the Spirit of God being in you, power. And that power, which has come upon you, has enabled you to become witnesses. Now you have the ability within you to tell others about Jesus and making them disciples, or in helping to make disciples that, um, um, rather, it's literally the last thing Jesus said before he ascended to heaven. Having the Holy Spirit within us means having more power to be a witness, to tell people about what Jesus did for them on the cross and how we conquered death and how we reigns victoriously. You don't have to be shy. Watch this, you don't have to shy away from being an advocate for Christ. It is what you are called to do. When you allow the Spirit to empower you for the kingdom purpose, you are now about making disciples of men. I hope that resonates with you clearly, believers. I wanna challenge you to know that God has never left us alone. My God, and if it had not been for the Lord who was on my side, where would we be today? God bless you. I pray that some aspect of this has blessed your soul. I can't wait to see what God does next. I dare not withhold anything from him. Now I must present myself to him once again. God bless you all. Before you step in, I wanna pray for someone right now that may be on this call, because I feel, I felt God before and he told me to do this way. Because I don't know where you are, and I'll, I'll turn the mic over in a minute, but maybe you are in such a place right now, and I believe God that he's gonna refresh you, and more importantly, he's gonna meet you where you are right, right now. I don't care if you are a new babe in Christ. Um, if you've not really, um, known him for yourself, it's been a while since, um, you've been to church, I don't, uh, it doesn't matter right now. What matters so is that God made an audience for you here. Um, praise God, is the Spirit of God has in fact called you to this very moment. As we've been praying all month long already, we've been sensing that God is gonna do some things in our own house. And I believe right now, somebody right now is in a position where God wants to use them and pour into them his spirit. I wanna challenge you right now, in fact, I wanna challenge us all on this call to just take a moment to ask God to wash us. Creating us a clean heart, cleanse us once again. Don't wait for me, come on, let's pray together. Father, Lord, I pray, Holy Spirit, that you will wash us and cleanse us, cleaning us, clean us up, oh God, make us right for your return, make us ready, oh God, to be used by you. Make us whole, make us clean, make us pure. Wash us, oh God, from all unrighteousness, cleanse us from all sin. Lord Jesus, oh God, I pray that we will be able to serve you and serve you with our all. I pray that you would wash, oh God, Lord Jesus. Oh God, Lord Jesus, oh God, the sins away, make us whiter than snow. Lord, oh God, as we open up our spirit man right now, oh God, and we avail ourselves, we, we ask that you would pour into us. Lord Jesus, oh God, that which is your spirit, that you would, oh Jesus, oh God, step in like a fire, step in like a flame. Oh Jesus, and burn and consume us so, as we surrender and submit, God, change our lives from the inward out. Lord Jesus, oh God, I pray, God, Lord, that you do a new thing right now, in the name of Jesus, for the one that believes right now by faith. Lord Jesus, oh God, and we stand to be a witness right now, to such, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen and amen. God bless you all. Elder, I yield the mic to you.
Amen. Thank you so much, Apostle. We wanna thank you for that. We wanna thank you for the words that God gave you, that you imparted to us. We thank you for what God is doing now and what he's about to do and what he's about to release in the earth realm. And we, if anyone wants to, uh, two people, if you wanna s- say anything, please raise your hand or unmute your mic.
Hey, prophetess, Rayma, this is Minister Brown from Atlanta, Georgia. I wanna just jump on and say, I wanna thank all you guys for the excellent hospitality when I visit y'all church the other Sunday. I have not been the same since I have been back here in Atlanta, and I already see what Apostle, what you spoke over my life, I'm already seeing it come to fruition, and I just wanna thank you guys for being obedient to the Holy Ghost and ministering and doing what he has told you to do regarding me and my life.
God bless you, sir. Listen, I saw you messing up the carpet at that church. I don't know what you did. I saw the photo, just wanna let you know, it's out there. The God be the glory, continue yielding yourself to him and let him use you mightily. I know there's a work for you to do.
And, and what, you're welcome, and you're welcome to every Bible study class, and anything we have on Zoom that you can attend, you are definitely welcome. Um, anyone else? One more person, please? If not, I'm gonna just say for everyone, good night, because unmute your mic as you leave the virtual door. There's a lot of, um, uh, reminders in the chat. Take a look at it before you leave. Copy and paste what you need to, and we will see you and have a great evening.
God bless you all.
Good night, everyone. God bless you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Oh man, good night.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Okay, now I'm gonna close the room. Good night.